Okay, I saw. For the whole building like this, but by the way, the workshop should start right now. Do you have any visitor form? No, we don't have one. Anyone in audience would like to speak to the council, refer to anything? Okay, I didn't see it, so I call the visitor form at six oh three. At this moment, I would like to invite council member Susan Saul. She want to discuss about food truck sales in Haltam City. Are you ready ma'am?
Uh, yes.
Okay, you bring food truck here?
Yes.
Assemble, yeah. Go ahead ma'am.
Well, uh, yeah, he's not. Oh, he is here. Okay, yay. Um, so Mr. Jim West, will you stand up so everybody can see you? So, Mr. West has a food trailer and he would like to be able to have, be able to do sales out of his food trailer in our city. He drives all the way to Boyd and he would like to be able to sell food out of his trailer here in this city. But we don't have an ordinance that allows that and describes what the boundaries would be if, if for that event, so.
At this moment, you have any information you want to share with the other council members staff and the audience? Or you want Mr. West come up here and say anything about food truck?
Would you like to come up and, well, okay, yeah, and maybe state what your status is with other requirements that you've already taken care of?
Mr. West, at first, you need to state your name and what city you live and go ahead sir.
My name's Jim West. I live twenty-nine fourteen Haltam Road.
Thank you sir.
I started a concession truck or trailer about four months ago. And it's been really hard to find a good location or a good place for opportunity. And I'm seeing all this vacant open area, uh, that it wouldn't really be hard. Uh, I have found going through Tarrant County, they have very strict rules and regulations on being able to do this. And I don't see where the problem would be to follow Tarrant County rules within our city limits. Right now, I'm setting up out in Boyd, long way to go. Uh, I know a lot of people that I'm learning as I, as go along. They do pay rent wherever they're sitting. Uh, they have to have a commissary to be able to get water, dump their gray water, and a kitchen to be able to prepare stuff. Uh, plus all the health department codes and regulations that you have to follow, like just almost identical, if not maybe a little harder than a restaurant. So, I really don't see. I guess I'm asking why or why not more than anything.
Go ahead, you want to ask?
Keith, did you say that someone is here to address some of this?
Yes ma'am, we're here.
We talked briefly this morning and she's got some information she'd like to share.
Thank you Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss West.
Thank you.
Evening mayor and council. I've done a little research on this and the reason we haven't allowed them in the past is that which is not defined in the ordinance is not allowed. So, we have never had a provision for that. Uh, one of the reasons that it was fought for so long is because we don't get sales tax out of it. If they're not, wherever the vehicle is registered is where you get, who you pay the sales tax to. So, if he lives in Haltam City and the vehicle is registered in Haltam City, that may be a different story. But so many times, that wasn't the case. Um, also, what we didn't want to happen was what you see when you go into Fort Worth is you get a, a trailer or a vehicle set up and they become a permanent fixture out of business. We don't want that. Do we want to look at doing a, a food truck park? Do we want to look at doing some sort of an annual event? Those are all different scenarios that we could talk about or, or think about, you know. Uh, Graham just had an annual event that had a great outpouring and they had a championship award ceremony for the, one of the food truck vendors there. So, that's something that maybe could put us on the map, just like our car fest that we had our tenth annual last, this, earlier this year. As far as food trucks themselves, like I said, we don't want them to be where they're competing with our brick and mortar businesses because we're trying to develop the city and get sales tax and employment, um, with our development. So, we really need to think about and make sure we head down the right path and have it regulated by ordinance of what all we're going to require, okay? So, that's kind of my two cents worth.
So, I know that at the car show at Haltam High School, they had trucks that-
Correct. Connor Ice was there and there was, I think, a funnel cake guy. Whenever it's a city function, they're permitted because we're exempt from our ordinances and there's nothing written. So, things like that, they're allowed. But as far as a business person that has a food concession, that's something that we just don't have to find currently.
How would one, uh, get permission to have their food truck at one of those events? Do they just need to call the city and say, please let me know when you're, you know, having an event?
Julie Orbaugh is the one that coordinates all that. She does the car show. She does Christmas on Broadway. As you know, the car fest is a combination of Spring Fest and the car show that we do. So, that was a combined effort of two different events that we had. So, we do have a couple of annual events that, um, could garner food truck involvement.
Jim, do you, Mr. West, do you have any additional questions of hers that, that she could answer? You'd need to come up here and then mic.
My question is, or is, not really a question, but like Fort Worth requires the truck to be set up at a specific time and then be gone from that location at a specific time, usually about one or two AM, depending on the place. I don't want people, I agree with you, I don't want people setting up next to brick and mortar places. It's more like your open areas. I know they require, Fort Worth requires you to have owner permission written and notarized, same thing with the store owner, and a bathroom permit for your employees for a public restroom. But I'm seeing an awful lot of open parking lots that are a way that don't have brick and mortar restaurants or anything like that, just normal retail issue areas that I think is kind of a wasted space. I really think it could draw some people in even if we had a park, like, uh, Saginaw's building. They're making a public park. They're converting a public park into a food concession slash open venue for music, uh, events and things like that. So, that's, that's where I kind of stand with it. I, I don't, I'm just looking for a way for more local people because I know there was a few here that were in Haltam City that were doing out of their garage. Not a good idea. I agree with that. But other than that, I really don't see a problem with it because every, most of your food vendors that are in operation do have all the requirements met. I know there are several trailers, especially up and down Twenty-Eighth Street, just on the other side of Beach Street, that never move. And according to the, the rules of Tarrant County, they have to be gone at a specific time, or if they're strictly mobile, they have to tell the city where, when they're going to be and they're only allowed to be there for one hour. Be kind of hard to enforce, I understand that, but I just don't like, with all the regulations, with the health department, everything. I know there was one lady that used to set up by Dollar Tree at Beach and Belknap, or Beach and Twenty-Eighth Street. She had good food, but she was selling right off her grill. That I don't agree with at all. I'm saying if we can get legitimate trucks in here that will follow the rules, I don't see, I don't see the issue. So, that's all I got to say.
Okay, can you stand there for a little? Before I, before I talk to you, let I ask you one question. How long you been in business?
I've been in business for about five months. I just started, yes. I worked at Peterson's Automotive for twenty years and I retired.
And you have the license from any city right now yet or?
I have Tarrant County certification.
Certification?
Yes.
But, okay, if you have Tarrant County certification, do they, our city or Fort Worth allow you to sell in Fort Worth or no?
Yes, they will allow me to sell in Fort Worth as long as I have permission from the property and the landowner.
But we don't have any ordinance like that by Miss Glenna. Okay, we not try to be hard with you, but because it's new and our city and Council Saul brought it up, but by the way, are you target? What target? A customer you target like the company with the people? Because I know food trucks sometimes pretty good for any company like the employee allowed to take thirty minute break.
Right.
They can drive.
That I haven't, that I haven't gotten into.
I tell you, it's a, I don't say a long way, but we try to work to be the friendly business town, you know? And we not try to be hard on you, understand that? Anything new we need to study and make sure that. Now, Council Mary and Hillary, go ahead.
This is actually for Glenna. So, if I understand correctly what was just said earlier, um, with the library's flea-for-all that we are having in September, we had someone approach us about bringing their food truck there. They have barbecue, I think, that they were going to sell, but in checking it, they found out that they couldn't have it in our city for that event unless they donated all of their proceeds to that event, not even keep enough to cover their expenses for supplying the food. Is that wrong information that they received or?
There's nothing in our ordinances or in our regulations stating that. And with that being a city event, that would be something Leslie could pursue on however she wanted to. I think Julie does like, say, a hundred dollars for a vendor fee and a certain percentage of their sales. She's got something that she handles on the car fest side of it. Leslie could look into that with Julie and see what, how she's handled the food vendors.
Okay, I wasn't personally involved in that discussion, so I'm not sure I have all the, all the facts that they were talking about. But I could have our chairperson of the Friends of the Library because Leslie didn't get involved in that. It was, it was our chairperson. So, I'll have her contact and Julie and see if she can find out more information and maybe that will be possible for us. Thank you.
I do have one more thing to add. P and Z will have a, an agenda item on August the twenty-seventh with a property owner at fifty-two thirty Denton Highway there by North Park. He has some vacant land behind the parking lot. It's all his property, but it's where Salon and Spa Galleria is. And he's wanting to modify his planned development to be able to do just what we're talking about today. So, that's going to go to P and Z on the twenty-seventh. There'll be discussion about it. Um, and then, of course, that'll be coming to council because if it's modified, it'll be approved by city council by ordinance. So, that's something to consider if, between now and then, when it does come to you, if we want to open that, that kind of use up to private property as opposed to just city functions.
Thank you.
That was a little tidbit that y'all weren't aware of.
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Miss Brett.
Let's try this again. There we go. I need to wake up. So, from what I'm hearing from everybody understanding, what it sounds like we need to do is get with Tarrant County Health. We need to probably get Fort Worth ordinance, pull those, see what they're doing, um, see what manpower we're going to need because we're going to have some, need somebody to inspect these and go from there.
Okay, so Adam is our contact with Tarrant County Health Department. He handles all our restaurants. So, that would be our point of contact for Tarrant County Health Department. As, uh, Mr. West said, that you have to be associated with a commissary as far as taking care of the unit itself. Uh, Saginaw just drafted an ordinance for their food truck park, um, so I have that information. Bedford has a really good ordinance that they did. Pretty much, you're looking at a million dollar certificate of insurance. Um, you're looking at getting copies of food handlers permits. The fire department needs to be on board to inspect these units. There's, there's a lot that goes into regulating, uh, this type of business. So, it's not an overnight thing and, you know.
Okay, only one thing we concerned about traffic, you know? If there is a food truck sale, they need to be how far from a curb? Because I saw, uh, in several city like Fort Worth before, they have the food truck and the people lie up long line, you know, and can stick out the street. Yeah, that's why we need to work something like that, but, uh.
Well, that's why a lot of the ones that have the, the food truck competitions or the festivals or things like that, um, they will, like the one at Graham, they were parked around the, the Courthouse Square, um, and it was a big, uh, big event. So, I have seen them like Keller. They do the farmer's market and they'll have food vendors up there. It's on the city park property. So, there's some different ways we could address it if we want to open it up to that. But like I said, we do have a case coming up and it's just time being what it is that, uh, we will be addressing food trucks on, on private property.
Go ahead, Mrs. Saul.
So, are the planning and zoning meetings open?
They're public meetings, yes.
They are public, so you might consider going to that on the twenty-seventh. And where are those held?
Here.
They are held here?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, alright.
Any more question from council? I see none now. Uh, thank you, Miss Glenna. Thank you, Miss West. Uh, let our council member, Susan Saul, try her best. If, uh, no problem. Yeah, if no problem, our city will try to help you, okay sir? Thank you. Then, the next one, I would like to invite our city attorney to representation on open government, I believe, part two, right?
Yes, thank you ma'am. So, this on the Texas Public Information Act. Um, you may hear this referred to as the Texas Open Records Act or Open Records Request. They're really the same thing, except for the Attorney General has adopted, uh, the Public Information Act to be in conformance with chapter five fifty-two of the government code that, uh, that governs this. So, the policy purpose behind the act is that our representative government is the servant, not the master of the people. Therefore, the act maintains the people's control over the instruments that they have created. The Attorney General's Office construes the act liberally in favor of open government. So, what this means is that all information is presumed to be public unless a specific exception to disclosure applies. Um, so anytime the request comes in, we are operating with the mentality that all of the information that is requested can be released until we look at it further and determine that there are some exceptions to that general rule. So, um, who must comply with the Public Information Act? You know, any entity with an executive or legislative branch, county commissioners, courts, municipalities, that applies here, school districts, counties, uh, non-governmental entities or portions supported by public funds. So, those are those that are dependent on public funds, uh, to operate as a going concern. You know, if we consider whether or not it's a governmental entity, that's, you send a request to the Attorney General to make that determination. What is not governed by the act is records of the judiciary. So, if any requests are made of the municipal court here, those are not covered by the act. Rather, those are covered, um, by those laws and rules adopted by the Supreme Court of Texas. So, what is public information? Um, it's a very broad definition. Information that's written, produced, collected, assembled, or maintained under the law ordinances in connection with a transaction of official business. Um, so what it does not cover are tangible items like a tool or a key. Someone can't come in and request the key to City Hall and you have to turn it over. Um, also, information that's used as a tool to manipulate or maintain or protect public properties such as a computer program designed to secure information management systems. So, you don't have to give anyone the, you know, passcode to get to certain, um, information within City Hall. So, examples of public information are, um, recorded information in any medium. So, information that's stored on mail servers. If, you know, if you, as a council member, have information on your private computers, that is included in the Public Information Act. You'd be susceptible to have to return that information over. Um, let's see. So, our, our recommendation with that consideration is use only government email accounts to conduct city business. And then, if it, your information were to be requested, then the, uh, city could come in and pull any information that would be responsive to that request there. Then you're not having your personal email have to be looked through. And again, when is it public? When it relates to official public business. So, that's also very important to remember. So the public information definition, whether or not it's subject to the PIA, does not turn on whether the informa-, where the information is stored or kept. It's about that, that content, any, any information regarding public business. So we just really like to drive that point home, that, you know, if you're conducting in public business on your personal devices, it's susceptible to the act. The Legislature Justice Session made, codified that. So there are now, you'd be considered a temporary custodian under the act if you have any information stored on a personal device. So what about social media? So this is kind of creating a brand-new area of what we have to consider looking at for the Public Information Act and how to respond to requests for information posted on social media accounts. So whether or not, for example, posts on the city's Facebook page, including the comments are information, or public information, and can those be deleted? The general answer is yes, if it's posted, it's, it's a public information request. You know, there's some conflict between record retention policy on social media accounts and the Public Information Act and what can be deleted or what can't. So if these are ever concerns that come up, you know, that we recommend, you know, calling the city attorney's office and getting that kind of clarified, because there's a lot of First Amendment, Record Retention, and Public Information Act overlaps within the social media policies, especially when the comment section have been enabled and citizens have been able to respond to things that the, the city has posted. So again, social media does allow you to have that opportunity to have conversations with the public outside of City Hall, outside of public comment time, but there is, you know, that potential for overlap. So again, if the tweet is, if you tweet, post on Facebook, LinkedIn, there's, there's multiple forums that can be used to connect with the cities, citizens. If it's in trans, connection with official business, it's subject to the act, would have to be turned over anytime someone requested that information. The comments as well underneath that, if requested, would be subject to, to the act. So everything that's going on in the, on the city's social media pages. And again, we're just kind of defining what transaction with official business is. It's kind of self-explanatory, but... So information that may be subject to the Public Information Act, again, it's information stored in any media. So emails in your personal account, text messages that you could have on your cellphone. We have received requests for these from different cities, asking for specific information from council members that might be on their cellphones that we've had to go back through and do research for. So just be cognizant of what you're, you know, posting on your personal social media, your personal email, and your personal devices, if it's con-, official business of the city, that could be subject to the information, Public Information Act. So responding to requests for information, how does the city know if the information exists? How does the city gather? So really what this comes down to is, especially if it's a request for your communications, is that cooperation is, is required. It's now statutorily required, as I mentioned before. The Legislature has officially named you as temporary custodians of records that you may have on your personal devices. It has requirements that you cooperate with the city to, to do that. So what's required of the city in those situations is that it makes reasonable efforts to obtain the information. So should a request come in for your communications regarding a certain issue, you would hear from someone on the city staff that just says, "We had this request come in, we need you to gather this and send it to us," or perhaps bring in your device and we could do the search for you. There's sometimes an off, option that is made, but you're required to cooperate and turn that information over. So what is a request? A request has to be in writing. It can't be that you run into someone at the coffee shop and they say, "Hey, I would really like to know what's going on." That doesn't constitute a request, it has to come into, in, in writing. And also, the records must already be in existence. They can't ask for something, for example, sometimes requesters try to say, "I would like everything that happens regarding this issue for the next year." Well, the records wouldn't be in existence at that point. You don't have to comply with ongoing requests for information, only what you already have. With the written request, it doesn't have to specifically say, "I'm making this request under the Public Information Act." If we can read it and construe it to be a request for information, again, we're, the act is read liberally, so we're gonna view that as a public information request. And additionally, the city is not required to answer questions. So if there is, if it just comes in that says, "I want to know the tax rate," the city shouldn't respond with necessarily, if, as a public information request, with the amount in an email. It should be an actual document showing what that amount is. So you don't have to answer questions, but we do recommend that if there's a document that answers it, because it is a request for records, that the record be provided. Okay, so to whom should the request be directed? A request can be directed to any employee in the governmental body. There is a exception to this, that if the city can designate a specific email address or fax number, that the request has to come through, or it can be made at City Hall. So if the city adopts that, such a policy, I'm not sure if you have one here or not, art, the designated email address or fax number? Yep, so if it doesn't come through that specific number, or be it dropped off at City Hall, then it wouldn't have to be responded to. So that, that is an exception to the general rule that it can come to anyone. So should you get an email from a requester asking for certain information, the best course of conduct is to then forward that to art to handle at that point. Okay, so after we get a, the city receives a request for information, it has to make a good faith effort to relate the information that it does have to the request. So searching through records or, you know, just trying to compile the information that may be responsive to that request. The city, again, is not required to create new information. Sometimes a request will come in that says, "I want a spreadsheet in this specific," sorry, a spreadsheet looking in this specific format, providing this information. The city doesn't have to comply with that type of a request to format information a certain way. But if it has the information compiled in a different form, it can provide it as it already exists. Again, you don't have to answer questions and you do not have to perform legal research for the person. The city has a duty to promptly produce the information. So this just means you can't withhold by law. We do have the opportunity, again, if we find that there's information that's subject to an exception under the act, to send it to the Attorney General's Office to attempt to withhold information that may be either confidential by law or under an exception. However, if there's no exceptions that apply, you have a duty to respond and provide that information promptly. So that means as soon as possible, under the circumstances, within a reasonable time, without delay. So what constitutes a reasonable amount of time? As I'm sure you can imagine, that's not very specific. It depends on the facts in each request. So the volume of the information might determine that it takes longer. There is a rule that if the city cannot produce the documents within ten business days of the date of request, it has to provide notice to the requester of the anticipated date and time that the, the information would be provided. If we are sending a request to the Attorney General's Office seeking to withhold information, that constitutes that notice to the requester, that information is not being provided right away. So even if you really want to know, the act prohibits you from asking a requestor what the purpose of their request is. So that, that can't be a consideration that we have at all, is, well, why do you want this information? And then, again, the city is not liable for what the requestor does once they receive the information either. There are some things we can ask the requestor. We can ask them to clarify their request. So, for example, if perhaps they use different terminology than, in their request, then how the city considers certain information, we can send them a letter that just says, "Can you please clarify, we don't have the information you're seeking, are you looking for this instead?" That type of a situation. You can ask them to narrow their request if it's going to generate a lot of documents. So, for example, if they ask for all records relating to a certain issue, you could ask them, "Do you want to narrow that to a certain timeframe?" And then, lastly, you can ask the requestor to provide proper identification to determine whether or not they're entitled to certain information within the, within the responsive documents. So all requestors must be treated equally. You can't give preferential treatment to any specific requestor. Additionally, you have, should be consistent with sending out cost statements or response times, 'cause we wanna make, avoid any appearance of favoritism. There is one exception to this rule. The city is not required to accept or comply with a request from information from a person who's imprisoned or confined in a correctional facility, or the city may choose to answer such a request if it, if it desires. So in the instances where we have an informative website, that the information may be on the website, we can respond to an information request with the specific URL of where that information can be located. It can't be a direction, just, "It's on our website, go look there." It has to be, you know, HTTPS all the way through the entire URL. Additionally, the requestor does have the right to clarify how they want that, would like their information received. So if they decide that they don't want to just go to the URL, that they want a paper copy of that information, they have the right to request paper copies, an emailed copy, or to come in and view at Town Hall, or City Hall, excuse me. And we, one of the avenues that the city can have used to recoup costs is to charge for the, for the time and the documents. So there are specific cost rules for each page, the amount of time for labor, the amount of time for redactions, how much you can charge for DVDs or CDs or any type of materials that might be responsive to the request. So initially, when you, before you compile, put all the information together, then we, we would send an estimate is the initial. If it's estimate is over a hundred dollars, the requestor is required to pay a deposit before the request has to be, or can be completed. So that's one avenue. You know, sometimes if the requestor isn't really serious about getting the information, once they see a high-cost estimate, that, that might change their mind of this, if they actually want the information or not. And then, again, I mentioned before that the requestor has the right to determine how they want that information received. Cost estimates are also dependent on that. So if, depending on how they request the information to come back to them, will depend on how we can provide a cost estimate. So once we've gone through the information that's been requested, we're, we're looking to see if there are any exceptions to the general rule that all the information is public. There are, exceptions can fall into two categories, whether they are mandatory exceptions, information that's considered confidential by law or by statute, or discretionary. And those discretionary exceptions are those that the city has the opportunity to raise, if it so desires to do so. So some common mandatory exceptions are employee information, if the employee has elected confidentiality, Texas motor vehicle information, juvenile law enforcement records and child abuse information, and dates of, and dates of birth, those types of information that's gonna see, be highly embarrassing necessarily to the person involved in the report. And some common discretionary exceptions are law enforcement record exceptions. We claim these often at the office, especially if it's an ongoing police investigation. The police department doesn't necessarily want that information released, 'cause it could interfere with their investigation or the prosecution of the case. The litigation exception, if there's an ongoing lawsuit with the city, we would raise a litigation exception to try to withhold that information. Same with the attorney-client privilege. And then the deliberative process is the kind of, the inter-office or inter-agency communications regarding something that hasn't been decided on by the city yet. So after you've reviewed that information, you've determined an exception applies, how, how can you go about withholding that information? Well, even if you are positive that an exception to the act applies, we can't just withhold it on our own. We're required to send that by law to the Attorney General's Office for a ruling. And we have to send that, a notice to the Attorney General's Office within ten days that we'll be raising an exception to withhold part of the information. And there are a few categories of information that the Attorney General has come out with prior ruling, saying, "We don't need to see this, you can just withhold it on your own." Those include email addresses, motor vehicle information, W-two and W-four forms, social security numbers, and then, again, that, the information about peace officers or city employees that have elected confidentiality, those are all included in information we can redact without a ruling. So we talked before about what you cannot ask of a requestor, but however, you can talk to them about the scope of the information. And so when you send the, a request for a ruling into the Attorney General's Office, it generally takes around forty-five business days to get a ruling back to be processed, to then release the information to the requestor. So one of the things that we can do is talk to them about, you know, there are some confidential concerns in here. Would you like to clarify your request that we could withhold that information? Because you give us authority to do it, and then, without sending it to the Attorney General's Office. So those are some ways to kind of work around the requirement to send to the Attorney General's Office. We do recommend that if you do that, if you have that conversation with the requestor to, you know, clarify their request, that we get that information in writing. Should they file a complaint with the Attorney General's Office, then we can show them that, no, we had authorization to make that withholding. Additionally, the other means of not having to send to Attorney General's Office is if there's a previous determination regarding the information that's been requested. So there are kind of two types of previous determinations. The most common is a repeat request. So a requestor requested their information once, they came back, they didn't get everything that they thought they should've, so they make the same exact request again. We can say, you know, "We've already sent this information to the Attorney General's Office. This was their ruling, this was what you were provided with, and we can rely on that prior ruling." Sometimes it's two different requestors that request the same information. We can still rely on that prior ruling in that situation. The second type is an Attorney General determination that applies to all governmental bodies. Again, we talked about the information that's been, the employees have elected confidentiality, or if it's information regarding a peace officer, the Attorney General's Office has said, "All cities in Texas, you are not required to get an Attorney General ruling on this information, it's confidential. You can redact it without seeking a ruling." So we have, the city has ten business days to request an Attorney General ruling and preserve its exceptions to release of information. These, this ten business days starts the day after the request is received, and you count all the days that the city is open for business. So if you're closed for, you know, Fourth of July was a recent day that the City Hall would have been closed, that would not count in the ten business days, even though it would have normally been open for business. Alright, so the next step is to request a ruling from the Attorney General's Office. We're required under the act to send a letter to the Attorney General's Office raising all the exceptions that we wish to withhold the information under. And the letter must detail what exceptions apply. We have to then also notify any third parties whose proprietary interests might be impacted by that information. So if there's a party that has a contract with the city, we would have to notify them that their contract has been requested. You have the right to raise any of your own exceptions with the Attorney General's Office. And the requestor themselves get a copy of that letter that we send to the Attorney General's Office, so they can be aware. so they can be aware of what information that we're seeking to withhold as well. And we're also required to send a fifteen-day brief. Often, we we merge these two documents together and only send one letter to the Attorney General's Office, just saving a step. However, for if maybe the information is voluminous, there's a lot to get, and perhaps the staff hasn't had the time to compile all of it within the ten days, we could send a letter to the Attorney General's Office with the ten-day letter just saying, these are the information we think will be in the responsive documents. And then, the fifteen-day letter is our final. This is everything that's here. So, that the letter is very similar, except for with the fifteen-day letter, we then also have to send in all the documents that are responsive that have information we're seeking to withhold. Again, the requestor gets a letter, a copy of this letter as well. And then, these are just kind of the technicalities. You label the documents. We, you know, highlight all through of what information we're seeking to withhold, what information is falls under which exception. So, if we just withhold the the documents, if no Attorney General ruling is requested within those ten business days, the information is all presumed to be open in public and must be released unless it's considered confidential by law. Again, those that information that's confidential by law is dates of birth, references, and the information that's been statutorily made confidential, so juvenile law enforcement, child abuse, those type of very serious situations. But if we don't send in a letter within the ten days, any discretionary exceptions, the the law enforcement records, the litigation exception, those type of informations, we can no longer seek to withhold those. So, theoretically, the Attorney General's Office has forty-five day business days to respond to a request for a ruling. Does it always get back to us within forty-five business days? No, not often. They they're supposed to send us notification to extend by ten business days. But again, they're getting a lot of requests, so they are often exceeding the forty-five business days. If the Attorney General's Office determines that an exception that we've raised does not apply, we have to release the information. So, we we can send in everything that we think is within that those documents. But what it comes down to is what the Attorney General tells us is or is not confidential, and then we comply with with their ruling. So, there are some enforcement procedures. If the Attorney General's Office or a requestor, if a requestor files a complaint with the Attorney General's Office and they find that we are not in compliance with their ruling, often, it's just they tell us, you weren't in compliance, you need to release the information. It's kind of the whole, the teeth of what they can do to the city. The other option that they have is to request a writ of mandamus with the court, which is, again, just asking the court to tell us that we need to comply with what they've already told us. So, the city is not able to challenge a request for a ruling from the Attorney General's Office. If we want to challenge what they have came out and ruled, we would have to file in Travis County, a lawsuit against the Attorney General's Office to kind to challenge their ruling. This slide. And again, we have thirty days to make that challenge. So, an individual who believes that a requestor that we're not in compliance with, that we're not in compliance with the act, they can they can file a formal complaint with the Attorney General's Office to have that information reviewed, and the Attorney General's Office would determine if if we released information accordingly. There are a few criminal penalties for failing to comply with the act. So, it's if a person with criminal negligence fails to give, provide access, or permit copying of public information, can face a fine up to a thousand dollars or six months in jail. So, really, it's it comes down to a good faith effort. Did you make a good faith effort to provide the information that was requested? Did you, you know, you didn't go through and hear that you got a request for your communication, so you decided to delete all of them after the request came in, so you didn't have to turn them over? Don't do that. Don't don't go through and delete all, you know, emails. That that's when you'll face potentially some of these criminal penalties. But if you're making a good faith effort to provide the information to the requestor and work with the city, these won't apply. Again, it is a crime to destroy or alter public information, ranges twenty-five dollars to four thousand dollars or jail time. And then, there is a distribution or misuse of confidential information penalty where you knowingly use the confidential information by a person who is not entitled to receive that information. So, when should you call the city attorney's office? Is when, you know, you think you have a right to withhold the information, if there is information that might be confidential by law or deals with third-party proprietary information. You know, we talked before about how you don't have to turn over computer data that would require the software systems to be manipulated. And another time is if the costs are going to exceed forty dollars, and we can help prepare a cost estimate and help the city recoup those funds. Or if you need to clarify the request is also a very frequent time that we are asked for help. So, are there any questions regarding this act?
Thank you. Talking about question, we don't have time because it will be a long time. But only one thing, let me ask you about this. Seen our elect official use our personal cellphone. You think the good idea for the city have to buy cellphone for elect official here?
I think it's a good idea to not use your personal cellphone for city business.
The city manager, what do you think about the budget? We need a new cellphone.
I mean.
You control the budget, not me.
Yeah, I know, but at least you will ask a financial director. Actually, you know, okay, for example, somebody want to say, I request all the message, all the phone call relate to city. And now, they bring out a whole bunch of a list. Do they limit it or they just highlight or just copy anything relate to the city alone?
Yes, so only the information that's city business is considered public information under the act. So, if you are using your city cellphone for to conduct city business and there is a conversation between you and your child about their sick day, that would that would not be public information under the act that would be responsive to this. It'd only be those text messages or emails that would relate to city business that would be responsive.
Okay, then, counsel, you need to think twice about a personal cellphone. This is because somebody wanted to mess with you, they just request your personal cellphone that bother you a lot, and we need to thinking about this one twice. And, Ms. Crowe, go ahead.
Well, they have to be a little more specific than saying, I want all the communication between me and the mayor. It has to be within a specific item.
Well, if if the request were to be, I want all communications between two parties, often, that's when we send a clarification letter to say, are you looking for a specific content? However, they can come back and say, no, I want everything between those two persons. So, then, it would be everything that's city business.
Okay, anyone feel sorry for elect or what?
Okay, now, the other question, can we bill? Because if we have to sift through our system, can we bill the city for time spent since we are temporary custodians of data?
So, we have to examine that. Right now, the the temporary custodian legislation didn't allow for that. There was nothing included, so we're going to have to do some additional research and to find that out. Because prior to be considered being considered a temporary custodian, we didn't believe that city employees or officers were able to bill their own personal time. I don't know that the act changed that.
Thank you.
Any more question? Where's that? Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, so, just for clarification's sake, if I only check my city emails on my cellphone, that would mean that they could take my cellphone.
So, your city email, your city email address would be of it be however you can access your city email address. So, if you can access that on through the city's IT department, and the city IT department could run the search, they wouldn't need your cellphone for that purpose. But if you're text messaging on your personal cellphone, then you would have to turn your your phone over.
Thank you.
Any more question?
I've had a couple of council people ask me if they take their city emails and erase them and delete them after maybe ninety days, then they're not, if someone wanted to go back and say, I'd like an emails that that was done in January of twenty nineteen, if they have deleted it, and we don't, and we would have to have a email ordinance, I would think, set that says, after a certain time, you can delete emails or even texts from your phone, and once you've deleted it, you're not required to produce it.
Well, you you already have that, in a sense, through your record retention policy. So, every email that you have, depending on the subject matter, has to comply, how long you keep it, with the record retention policy. It's the same for your text messages that you might have on your personal device would need to comply with the record retention policy. If you're doing any posting on social media for city business, you're going to need to comply with the record retention policy for that information as well.
What the city owners, how long do we have to keep that information?
Yeah, I'll have to look that up because it does, there's a whole listing of different things that are that are set. I did want to let you all know that it is, it is a viable thing. You can use that for so many days. You can go and clear out, and you're not held accountable.
You know, because for the safe side, we are the elect official and the staff here, and we want to make sure that our personal, our personal business, our business. So, counsel here, you're thinking about if actually elect official need the separate cellphone for tech message with city? Why don't do that? Because most of our council member here use our personal cellphone to download the city email. That would be a subject for open record too on your cellphone, right?
So, if if it's your city email and the city IT department can access, I'm not sure, can IT access it regardless of where it's from? Then, you wouldn't need to turn your cellphone over if it was a request for emails.
Even you have the the able to download the city email, right?
Right, because IT can access that from there.
You have any question, ma'am?
No. I have one last thing I wanted to add to, and 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 some people have asked me about this is that, for example, several years ago, we had a request, a person put thirteen things on there, on one request, and we gave them a cost estimate. It was going to be, we estimated about sixty dollars, so we sent him that. We went pursued, and we'd got everything lined out. Took about a day of several people to get all this information compiled. I had to go to the water tower to get several records. We brought it all back. The final bill was about fifty-four dollars, and we had it set, told the person within four days, we have the record, and they never picked it up. Now, that same person, two months later, requested another item. But we cannot refuse them on a second one, just because they never paid for the first one, correct?
So, there is a rule that if you have provided a cost estimate letter actually sent to the requestor, and they've agreed to make the payment, and they're in excess of a hundred dollars of agreed payments that they haven't made to the city, until they make those payments, then you don't have to comply with any future requests. But it has to be, the letter has to be sent, it had, they had to agree to it, and it has to be over a hundred dollars.
Anything below that.
Right, then then we're still required to comply.
Any more question? I see none. So, at this time, we will adjourn the workshop session at six fifty-five. And please come back, take ten-minute break, come back at seven oh five. Thank you.
I'll have her revise the presentation.
Um most of them go through art, every once in a while, somebody will send me one. Yeah, what we do is we send it to art and then art will distribute it, Art O'Donnell will distribute it to whoever needs to do. And in the meantime, they usually contact Alicia if they have, you know, if they think there's a, yeah, Alicia does a lot of, a lot of work. Cause the, you know, the, the bad part about it is you, you, people can use it for their business. Like we get, the vast majority of our requests are enough for water council, they've been cut off, code violation, because it's realtors looking for houses to flip and stuff like that. I mean, we get so many of them, it's crazy. But there's no like commercial exception, you gotta, you gotta get them. I, if I was y'all, I would not want to say something. If I was you guys, I would not want to say something.
Why?
Because people are, you know, they jack, when they're automatically getting requests and stuff. If you don't use your personal for city business.
We can uh, we can discuss on the executive session.
Last session, I call the meeting in order. First, we need invocation and place of allegiance by council member Ricky Brown. I'm sorry I didn't hear you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to take like a fifteen second uh silent prayer for Jimbo White, served the city for a long time. Uh very good friend, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for Jimbo. Thank you. May we bow our heads as we pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for being in our lives and guiding us. Thank you for privilege to be able to gather and govern in a free and democratic society. We give thanks to the women and men who continue to fight for this freedom every day. Father, please watch over every employee of this city as they go about their daily routines to make Halton City the city that it is. Lastly, Father, guide this council as we work together in to build a community that we can all be proud of. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please sit down. And uh thank you, Council Brown, for a lot of allegiance. And I just remind all council, when uh each of you have so many board member and make sure that something like Mr. Jim, Jimbo. And uh we need to announce us, we need to have a moment of silence. Or anyone, you know, in hospital, a serious unit, you can let me know. I make sure I spend time to, or you can come in there to visit them. That is a need to, because we are family, thank you. Okay, the next one would be announcement and event by CTS Secretary, Mr. Al Camacho, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Meeting announcements for April, I mean for August the twelfth, two thousand nineteen in the public library. There are teen programs, family movie night, summer reading program, adult GED, ESL classes and other library activities that are listed on the library's website for the dates and times, so please check the website. In community programs, the CRT classes, CERT classes, the twenty nineteen CERT classes will begin September ninth. And CERT volunteers are a vital component of the Halton City Fire Department. Skills learned in CERT classes include basic preparedness, know what to do, light search and fire, and rescue fire safety, basic first aid, GPS training, damage assessment training and more. Applicants must be eighteen years of age or older and are subject to a background check. Online applications can be found on the city website. Or if you have any questions, you may contact Fire Marshal Damian Vogel at eight one seven seven five nine eight six six three. The Citizens Police Academy, CPA, the classes will start August the twenty first from seven to nine PM and will continue for ten weeks on Wednesday nights. Classes will be held at the police department and AA registrations will be handled online. So be sure to check the city webpage for online applications and the class is limited and there are only just a few spots that remain. The class is an overall view of our police department and will involve some hands-on experiences and will allow a citizen to meet many of the officers and participate. And that's our miss.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. The next one will be presentation for a long time, Employee Service Awards. Mr. Tony Meggitt?
Mayor, I'm gonna, this one will be mine. Um part of our, probably a very important part of our employee culture over the last four years has been to look internal to the organization when we had promotions, transfers or reassignments. And we've had dozens of employees take, take advantage of that part of our culture and um it's been such a successful part of it. And um who we're gonna honor tonight, um I, I can't say enough about her and how she runs her department and how her employees um respond. She is a longtime employee here, twenty-five years. Um she's the planning director, she moved her way up through the planning department, we are so incredibly proud of her. Uh everything that she's done for this community, especially in the last few years, all the, the positive development we have going is in large part to her. So I just wanted to recognize Glenna Bachelor tonight for twenty-five years of service to the city. So Glenna, I'll meet you down here.
When anything you say, I'll maybe sing a song.
Have you ever known me to be at a lack of words? I just wanna say, um I really appreciate my, my time that I've served here and I hope to retire from Halton City. I've uh been blessed with people around me that have recognized my talents and strengths. Um started off with Jerry McIntyre in the fire department. Um James Pliska was very instrumental in my career. I was the first woman building official for Halton City, one and only. And uh I've just been blessed, I've had a good support from my family and uh friends. And to say thank you.
Well.
I've got my, my daughter and son and my youngest granddaughter here tonight.
Hi.
Thank you.
I tell you, uh P and Z Director's job is very hard. When the applicants come to apply and later on turned out because of the condition of the building, she, somebody hate her. She, well, it's so hard, but actually, you know, safety, you know, one. And you've been pleased with a lot of people in town and look at our city improve every day. Thank you, the job you have been done. I bet you all the council member here, I appreciate your work, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, now we come to a consent agenda. We have item number one minutes, number two agreement for our transportation development credits and number three construction contract. These three items ready for motion?
Mayor, before we uh take the motion, I do would, would like to uh make note that on the July twenty-second, uh there's an update on the correction on the minutes of names. I had Charlie Rhodes instead of Charlie Roberts and uh another name that uh, sorry.
Charlie Rhodes.
Yeah, Charlie, Charlie, I had Charlie Rhodes instead of Charlie Roberts and then I had Kelly Rhodes instead of Kelly Roberts. I'm sorry about that, Charlie, didn't mean to get the wrong name on there. But, but anyway, I did wanna make that correction. Uh so if you do accept the consent, be sure to accept it with the minutes corrected, thank you.
Thank you, Council, you have any comment or question? If not, uh this three item ready for motion? Uh Councilman Grohl?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the noted uh changes to the minutes for the twelfth.
And uh thank you, Miss Grohl.
Okay, the twenty-second or what is it, the twenty-ninth or?
No, it was the, it was a meeting on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah. So.
And. So, Council? What's the, I'm sorry.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
Well, okay, there's a, an agenda, so if you wanna go and get the agenda that's posted on the outside and then that, you can follow. I think uh Ms. Beckett's gonna get it.
Sir, we get, we got somebody get for you, sir. Okay, uh Ms. Councilman, Council, so?
Thank you, Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, we have second now, the three item ready for, ratio your vote. Okay, item one to, I, item number one to three unanimous approve. Now we thank you so much and move to a regular agenda. Number four, property tax rate. Mr. Fa, Director of Financial, would you please come in?
So since we didn't have a lot of detail of the numbers at our last budget meeting, we wanna talk about our um tax dollars. I'm gonna explain a little bit about um the tax in general for property tax and then show you the numbers that, that we ended up with. And also wanna talk about some changes that are coming due to Senate Bill number two. So to start off, it's important to know and understand the total tax distribution. So I just wanna make sure everyone understands in a total tax bill, the city actually gets twenty-four percent of that total tax bill where the school district gets fifty-four. And then we also share that with the Tarrant County College District, the Hospital District, as well as the county itself. So Senate Bill two, what is Senate Bill two? So Senate Bill two was tax reform for property tax. Uh it was a transparency act of twenty nineteen and it goes into effect as of one one twenty twenty. So the decisions that are made, this budget, this tax season are not governed by that. There are some different reporting mechanisms that we have to do uh in regards to this, but nothing that affects voter, the tax rate itself. Uh the terminology will change pretty drastically and I thought it was really important to talk about that. So the terminology with uh Senate Bill two uh is gonna change the stuff, the terms that we've used for many, many years. So the effective tax rate will become the no new revenue tax rate. The effective maintenance and operations rate will become the no new revenue maintenance and operation tax rate. And then the rollback rate will be called the voter approval tax rate. And just to, to remind everyone, the effective tax rate refers to the benchmark tax rate that's needed to raise the same amount of maintenance and operations on existing property as the previous year. Where the rollback refers to the calculated maximum rate allowed without an election. When you look at how Senate Bill two uh changes the numbers, um Senate Bill two basically caps the amount that we can raise uh the effective maintenance and operation rate. So where we're currently at eight percent, Senate Bill two is going to lower that to three and a half percent. So the way this is calculated is the effective maintenance and operation plus the debt service tax rate, which this rate will be whatever is needed to pay for the uh debt for that fiscal year. So this plus this will give you the rollback rate. So under Senate Bill two, that three and a half percent plus your debt rate becomes the new voter approval rate. When you put numbers to that, uh under our current rate of eight percent, our current effective maintenance and operation is this number right here, point three eight three zero eight one. When you take that and you add that to the debt service tax rate, which is point two five two zero three three, the rollback rate becomes point six six five seven six zero. If Senate Bill two went into effect right now and we had to do this based on what's gonna come next year, if you use those same exact numbers with the three and a half percent cap, that would take your rollback. if you use those same exact numbers with the three and a half percent cap, that would take your rollback rate to point-six-four-seven-two-five-four. This chart has a lot of information on it, um, this gives you where our assessed values were all the way back to two thousand and ten, as well as our tax rate and the average tax to uh, each taxpayer. So, right now, if you look here, as everyone knows, the values continue to rise. So, we had a sixteen-point-four percent increase last year, this year, it's a thirteen and a half percent increase. And the average taxable value is going up as well. This increases everyone's net worth, which is a great thing, uh, but at the same time, it also increases the average tax each taxpayer pays. So, just plugging in the rollback rate as of right now, it equates to about, about eight dollars a month, which again is twenty-four percent of the total tax bill. Wanna make sure everyone understands, um, you can't always compare our tax rate to our neighbor's tax rate, because even though our neighbors may have a lower tax rate, which is here. So, we pulled all this data from the website of these cities, this is the current tax rate, this is not uh, the new tax rate, 'cause those haven't been uh, determined just yet. But we have Ulyss Keller, North Richland Hills, Bedford Watauga. And even though the tax rates are vary quite differently, because of the average house price, this is the average that each taxholder pays per household. And it's a little bit easier to see when you look at the actual chart. So, what this shows is with six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars per household, we have to pay for the same things that these other cities pay for, because we pay the same cost for a police car as Keller does. However, they bring in about fourteen-thirty-one per household. So, this is a reason why the, the tax percentages vary. I did uh, speak to some of my counterparts in these same cities, these are the individuals that responded. Um, and my question was, what are you doing to prepare for Senate Bill two for next year? So, um, all of our neighbors are going to propose uh, the tax rate right at rollback rate or just slightly under rollback. With the exception of Keller, they're slightly under effective rate by like point-zero-zero-one percent. So, a really important thing to understand also is when values go up, rates go down. So, when values increase, rates decrease. This gives you a picture of if values go up by ten percent next year, and they likely will, because those values are continuing to go up. Um, and also eventually we'll have some new uh, property tax rules uh, with the new construction on this. But when that goes up, the rate's gonna go down. So, looking at what effect Senate Bill two will have on, on us next year, is our voter approval rate or rollback rate will be at sixty-one cents. So, we chance uh, lowering the tax rate by about five cents next year. What that means is, we will only bring in about a hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars more new revenue. And needless to say, this dollar amount is not enough to cover even the uh, cost of rising healthcare. Uh, it certainly wouldn't pay for any new equipment, any new requests or uh, any salary increases. This also gives you a, a chance to take a look at what's happened in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So, these are the M and O plus the INS tax rate, so the INS again is the debt. And then giving you three different values for our current, our budget currently is based on the point-six-five-three percent. What that does is it actually allows us to bring in uh, four-hundred, right here, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars more from one budget year to the next on the M and O side. And as you know, we had bond election and so our INS certainly increased as well. If you look at the difference between the current tax rate with this year's values versus the rollback tax rate with this year's values, it's a penny difference. If we adopted the rollback rate rather than the current tax rate, it would allow us to bring in three-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars more than what we currently have budgeted. So, why adopt the rollback tax rate? Um, our current tax rate, like I said, is at six-five-three, uh, although our general fund is still at a deficit of one-point-two-million dollars. Adopting the rollback rate will decrease that deficit in the general fund to eight-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand rather than the one-point-two-million. Again, this is the final year to be able to increase that M and O at eight percent, because of Senate Bill two next year, your cap is at three and a half percent. And the M and O rate is expected to drop from point-four-one-three-seven to point-three-six-zero-four next year. And again, the rollback or voter approval rate's projected to decrease to about sixty-one cents next year. What happens from here? So, tonight, whatever rate you guys decide on is a rate that gets published. However, whatever rate that is, you cannot vote for that rate to exceed that amount, you can lower it, but you cannot exceed what is um, decided tonight. So, this again is just for the purpose of uh, setting a, a max rate. Um, and then we will hold two public hearings, so the first public hearing will be on August nineteenth. The second public hearing will take place on August twenty-sixth. And the actual tax rate would be adopted on September ninth, uh, during our budget adoption. What questions do you have that I might be able to answer?
I have a question with you.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder, you tell the audience and the people watching us on television, does any of our neighbor city have the senior citizen tax freeze?
Uh, everyone has some type of discount given, I didn't put all that data together to give exactly what those amounts are, but we are absolutely the highest tax freeze uh, in that category. I can pull that together for you.
Yeah, you can uh, explain to people next time and what senior citizen tax free mean to the people, what age they affect, something like that, because a lot of people ask that question too.
Sure.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, council, you have any question? Uh, Ms. Van Zen, Councilman Van Zen.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. Um, that relating back to the mayor's question, I was curious if in those statistics, we knew the percentages of the home setters and the percentages of new bills, because I wouldn't think that Halton would have as many new builds as the other cities.
That's correct, and without looking at their actual worksheets, um, I wouldn't have that data. We can look to see what it is they've posted on the website. I do know that in talking to Tarrant County, they're supposed to post the last five years worksheet for every city prior to uh, September first, so we should be able to pull all that data down at a later date.
Okay, thank you, I'm just curious, because I would imagine that that would dramatically affect our overall, why we're not receiving as much, because we have so much lower estimated properties as well.
That, that is exactly correct, and that is one reason why I wanted to show you guys that information on this slide. And again, that's just taking into account the, the values, it's not taking into account the exceptions. So, that would act, absolutely alter this as well.
Thank you ma'am, and uh, Councilor. Row, I'm sorry. Which one first?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think you were for, I think you were before me, 'cause you had your mic on and.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Faust, for all your work on this. Uh, on the general fund reserve, when you say it will be one-point-two-million dollars negative, but that doesn't mean, that's just one-point-two-million dollars below the optimal reserve fund, I mean, it's not broke, correct?
That means that we're dipping into reserves by one-point-two-million dollars, so that amount means our expenses exceed revenues by one-point-two-million dollars. Even after dipping into the reserves, we should finish nineteen or twenty-twenty at a twenty percent fund balance. However, if you take into account the one-million dollars in salary savings that we have in the current twenty-twenty budget, proposed budget, then that would drop our reserves down to seventeen percent, taking that million dollars out.
Which is approximately what, four million, four and a half million in the reserve fund, and our optimal would be six million?
Correct, we currently have one-point-six-million, but we're using uh, one-million of that uh, in the twenty-twenty budget in order to help balance that budget, so we are dipping into reserves.
But it's not broke?
Correct.
Because I remember some weeks back, we discussed and I thought that all of our reserve funds were in great shape.
And that is correct, so the proposed budget puts us right at twenty percent uh, in, in the budget that we've proposed to you guys. And that is at the point-six-five-three tax rate. Our concern is next year. So, the reason we're proposing that uh, rollback rate is because next year, we will have to make some very drastic changes in order to balance the budget, including dipping into salary reserves. So, the more we have in the reserves, if we were to adopt the rollback rate, it would put our reserves at the end of twenty-twenty at twenty-one percent, which gave us an additional three-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. If we adopt the current, uh, we'll be at twenty percent and we'll have to make some uh, very important budget decisions next year.
Uh, then one other question, I'm sure it's here somewhere, what is our effective tax rate for this year?
So, the effective, let me go back to. It is point-three-eight-three-zero-eight on the M and O side, the total effective is point-six-three-five-one-one. And that's in this column right here.
Okay. I wonder how Fort Worth lowered their tax rate four and a half cents this year?
Uh, we did not, in our analysis, we did not reach out to the city of Fort Worth, I've read those headlines. Uh, but we don't often compare uh, them to some of our neighboring cities that are closer to our size. Um, and they have a much larger tax base to spread that across than we do, so.
And I suppose they're not concerned for next year's SB two then, huh?
I would be interested to know what they plan to do next year.
Okay. Thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Gro, go ahead, sir.
Yep, uh, Sedona, okay, my understanding there are three pillars to revenue for the city. Property tax, sales tax and uh, fees and, and fines.
Correct.
So, how are we looking in our um, sales tax? 'Cause the fees and fines, um, that's, you know, that could change like the weather. You know, might be good one year, bad another year, that's something I don't wanna hang my hat on. But uh, sales tax, how's that looking for next year?
So, sales tax right now, uh, in our projected, sales tax represents thirty-five percent of total revenue, whereas property tax represents a thirty percent of total revenue. Uh, we do have like transfer of funds from other funds to general fund, uh, like you said, the license permits and fees um, and fines and so forth, that also make up a portion of that, but is thirty-five-thirty. And I'm getting a little, I'm growing a little more concerned about our sales tax. Uh, and I will cover some details of that at the next council meeting when I do the next monthly financial report, because we are continuing to see a very significant decrease in our sales tax due to the ADT, which is our number one tax base customer.
And what happened with ADT?
Uh, they've opened up nine additional locations, so we're now sharing those sales tax with those nine locations. In fact, I am pretty sure we're gonna have to adjust our projections in this twenty-twenty budget in our sales tax line item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any more question from council? Okay, you don't have one, and we need to action on the tax rate tonight. So, if you have no question, item number four ready for motion. Councilman Gro.
Okay, uh, and what we're doing is just setting the rate, this is not the actual tax rate, I just want everybody to know. I move that the preliminary property tax rate be set at um, zero-point-six-six-five-seven-six per one-hundred dollars of net taxable value comprised of maintenance and operations rate of zero-point-four-one-three-seven-two-seven and an interest and sinking rate of zero-point-two-five-two-zero-three-three. And that public hearings concerning the preliminary tax rate be held on August nineteenth, twenty-nineteen and August twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Councilman Gro, and uh, Council, please.
Just for a second.
Okay, we got a second, you have any more question? If you don't, this item ready for more, for the red, I mean, go ahead, Russia, you vote. Thank you, the unanimous uh, approved item number four property tax rate, thank you, Ms. Faust. And the next item will be CCPD budget. Go ahead, ma'am.
So, this is actually our second uh, public hearing for the CCPD budget. Um, we did meet on July twenty-third with the CCPD board. And uh, there's just been a couple of real slight changes that we made in that budget. There was one line item that did not copy over to the total. And so, we have made a, a three-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-five-dollar uh, adjustment on the expense side. So, that takes our proposed ending fund balance to one-million-seven-hundred-forty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-three dollars. Uh, CCPD does have a very healthy fund balance. And I believe, um, Mr. Laney wanted to add to that.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Mrs. Hillier and I had a brief discussion before the work session and she asked some very good questions. One of her questions was why we keep the fund balance so high in the crime control prevention district budget. Um, to make a long story short, our philosophy that we started ten years ago with CCPD was to, there's two things it's susceptible to, one is it's voter-approved. So, whenever we go out to vote, um, the voters can say, we don't wanna have a CCPD budget anymore. The last time voters um, elected to have a CCPD was in two thousand and fifteen, so in two thousand and twenty-five, it'll go before them again. The other thing is, it's very, very susceptible to sales tax. Um, if you remember two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine, which is now known as the Great Recession, our sales tax dipped quite a bit, so when I got here as police chief in oh-nine, we were running a ninety-thousand-dollar-a-year deficit in the CCPD. So, what's relevant is we, our two largest expenditures on a yearly basis are personnel and shared services agreement. As you know, our shared services agreement is for police dispatch and jail services with North Richland Hills and two other cities. Um, and personnel, so those two put together totaled over a million dollars. So, the reason that we keep a million-dollar-plus fund balance in CCPD is in case the voters say in two thousand and twenty-five, we don't wanna have this anymore, that gives us a year to find out how we're going to fund those personnel costs and that shared services cost. So, instead of having to hit fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and say, all right, we have to find a million dollars somewhere, we keep that fund balance that high, just in case of that kind of an event. In the past, some of the things we spent it on, um, that we had to kind of at the last minute is we bought some police vehicles, instead of issuing debt, we paid cash for. police vehicles instead of issuing debt, we paid cash for them out of CCPD. And also we paid for radios. So there's some big expenditures that come along that every once in a while we have to, to pony up for in CCPD. Probably the biggest one since I've been here was we used it to correct the compensation, a lack of compensation that we went for about seven years. So we ended up spending that entire fund balance towards fixing the police department's compensation that we fell behind in. So, but anyway, long question, long answer. That's, that's why we keep that, that type of fund balance.
And that's perfect lead in for our revenues and expenses here. So you'll see our total expenses is at 1,743,282. Revenue exceeds that at 2,687,076. So that leaves us an ending fund balance again at 1,748,633. And here's the change that I described. It was in a dues and subscriptions line item. On the revenue side, it, this is a really nice picture of revenues exceeding the expenditures. And this just sums up the totals of each. This is the sales tax revenue. And like Mr. Lane said, as long as the economy is doing great, sales tax are doing great, you'll see this upswing, which is great. That can change at any given point in time. When you look at the total pie chart and how those expenses are divvied up, 32% is operations, 28% personnel, and 40% of that is the shared service that he referred to. And just to kind of go over some of the budget highlights, again, the revenues are right at 2 million dollars. Expenditures at 1.74. Major budget items are the personnel, the shared services. They're paying for the body cam, camera storage that was discussed, one of the decision packet items. Salary increase as well as 30,000 of that 80,000 payment for that incinerator is coming out of this fund. And this just breaks down two of those items with the exception of that incinerator that, that shared with the, the other fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but this is also a public hearing.
Councilman Grohl?
The numbers that we have on our, our slides, do they reflect the potential loss of sales tax revenue from ADT or?
It does not. Those have not been adjusted as of yet. I just pulled those numbers, most recent numbers down today.
Okay, so we could expect the revenue not to be 207?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Van Zet.
Yes, I'm curious on the 1.7 million that's in the CCPD. Is that actual liquid or is that invested?
I, that's, that's a liquid amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Faust, the, the, the loss of red light revenue, that has nothing to do with CCPD, right?
That's correct. It's in a fund of its own.
Okay. And of the sales tax, what percent goes to the CCPD of the sales tax that we collect?
Uh, I do.
One quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Point 20, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Marion Hillier?
On the salary incre, go back where you were. Next one. Where you had the little, the salary increase and the expenditures?
The pie chart?
Go forward. One more or two more? One more.
Right there.
There's a salary increase here.
No, one more, go one more though. Okay, that one. Okay, so for salary increases, it was requested 13, but it's only funded for 11. So how, what does that mean? Does that mean that the salaries, the increases for the officers, there's not going to be as much? Or are we going to pull from our reserves in order to come up to the requested amount at some point?
That's a good question. We actually had 3% in the original numbers and we lowered that mid-budget planning down to 2 and 1/2%. So that number, the 11,000 does reflect the 2 and 1/2% that was presented to you guys in the budget workshop.
Oh, okay. I'm just, I really would rather see the 3% for the police officers, but maybe that's because I like them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more question? Okay, if you don't have any more question, item number five. Let's see now. We had a public hearing. And at this time, we will open the public hearing at 7:48. Is anyone in the audience would like to speak against this agenda? I see none, so I call it public hearing at 7:49. And come back, let's see now, we have.
We don't have more. You can just, you can ask if they want to approve.
Yeah. Okay, recommendation here, the staff recommended, see, council conduct public hearing. Already done that and subject to public hearing. Okay, recommend to approve this. Okay. I would like to recommend to approve the FY 2020 CCPD budget. So, Council, go ahead, pressure your vote.
No, they need to, they need to make a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Long night. Go ahead, the item ready for motion. Uh, Councilman Grohl?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget for the Crime Control Prevention District.
Thank you for the motion. And second, the, Mr. Thompson, go ahead, ma'am.
Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, we got the second. And you have any more question before we pressure your vote? Now this time, go ahead, do it. Thank you. Okay, item number five, CCPD budget unanimous approved. Thank you, Council. And now move to number six, Ms. Toni Becker, Director of Human Resources. Mentioned about employee benefits. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, good evening. First off, I'd like to apologize. There was a typo in your memo that came in your packets. So when y'all broke between the executive session, I mean, between the work session, I placed a revision there. I've highlighted the number that was incorrect in that table. So tonight, I'm here to talk about the dental benefits that we provide to employees as well as the medical insurance. So this year was one of the years that we went out for dental bids. And we will have our open enrollment. We are making a change and so we'll have a, it'll be an active enrollment. Every employee will have to sign up. We'll have our annual health fair this year as well. Our open enrollment period will run for about 30 days. It's a little bit later this year than normal, but we will go ahead and have that. Since we have to touch every single employee, it'll be important that we have open enrollment meetings, explain the changes to them and things like that. So when we went out to bid, we received nine bids from different various vendors for the dental insurance. And after reviewing the bids, we felt that Cigna provided the best offer and the best value to the city because included in their offer was a lower increase on the medical. Well, the medical bid is obviously the biggest and most substantial cost to the city in terms of benefits for employees. So we do recommend that we go with Cigna for the dental. That would be for the DHMO, which is where the employee have unlimited service and they have lower out-of-pocket cost, but there are fewer dentists that are in that network. Because we have some employees that that would appeal to. And then the other plan is the PPO and that is just your traditional plan where you can go in-network or out-of-network. But that accommodates employees that may be very picky about their dentist and want to see a particular dentist. That plan, they'll pay a little bit more money for that option. And then the benefits are capped at 1,500 a calendar year. So in the two tables that you have there, you'll see that the rates are actually going to go down just a little bit. Not a lot, but a little bit of a decrease in both of those things. Now, when we go over to the medical benefits, the medical benefits have been provided by Cigna since October of 2016. And we had been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for about nine years, but we felt it was time to go out and see what the market was. So we have had Cigna for that amount of time. And the original contract when we went out to bid allowed us to have renewals if the rates were favorable. Well, Cigna came back this year and as I said before, they proposed either a 5% increase if we didn't move our dental with them or a 4.15% increase if we packaged all of the benefits with them, the medical and the dental together. Now, the nice thing about that is that in terms of just looking at the dental, we actually will see a savings of about 55,000 because of the savings that we'll get on the medical side of it. Now, there is still an increase in the cost of the medical benefits, but the benefit plan will stay exactly the same. We're not proposing any changes to that. The city will maintain our current funding philosophy, which is to pay 100% for employee only and then contribute 55% towards dependent coverage. And on that table, you'll see how much the increases are. Nothing incredibly substantial. They are much less than the increases were last year because last year our increase was about 9%. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, look at on the chart here, covert level, the employee only, usually they pay 802 a month, right?
Yes.
And now zero?
Okay, so the, that, the total monthly cost, the 80202, that's what it costs the city for employee only right now. And then in October, that cost is going to go up to 833.
Yeah, for employee.
Um, yes, per employee, but then the, the city will bear all of that cost.
And now zero, right?
Well, it has been zero. The, the funding philosophy hasn't changed. The city pays 100% for employees and they will continue to do so.
Thank you. And Council, you have any question? Councilor Van Zet?
Yes, I have a point of correction. It's in my agenda, it states that the mayor is David Everett on this agenda on page three.
Whoop, oh.
We did get that.
So the one I have doesn't.
I do have one that's been corrected. Yes, it's on track. We will have, I have it here. New one that she has now has on track. The one she handed, yeah, the open.
He still remember former man.
I get confused.
Well, you know, go ahead, Council Thompson, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, I'm understanding that the plan did not change. Is that correct?
On the medical?
On medical.
That's accurate.
Okay. And the dental, are we giving them a better plan than what they've had previously?
No, it's just a different provider. The.
So everything's staying the same?
Yes, the, the plan is not changing at all. We're just changing providers. We currently have Unum for the DHMO and Blue Cross Blue Shield for the PPO, but we'll be joining the two to the same provider through Cigna.
Okay. Okay, thank you much.
Thank you, Council Thompson. Any more question? If not, this item number six, employee benefits, will be ready for motion. Council Thompson?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we award bid B 2019-061-004 for dental insurance and the renewal of the medical insurance provided by Cigna.
Thank you, Council Thompson. And Council Van Zet?
I second that.
Thank you, ma'am. And this item number six, ready for your, pressure your vote, please. Okay, item number six passed unanimously approved by all council. Now we move number seven, Ms. Bachelor, replat, P dot 007 dot 19. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is to conduct a public hearing and consider action on the application of J.B. Davies on behalf of Theron Bryan of Transwestern for the replat of locally known as 5901 Eden Drive. The applicant proposes to create one lot by combining four lots for industrial top uses. This property currently has an existing building that was constructed in 1963. The applicant intends to make some improvements to the building and get it reoccupied. Current zoning for this tract is M1 Industrial. Total acreage is 2.45 acres. On July 23rd, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval of P double 0719. Other than discretionary matters for the council, the application is administratively complete and meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. It is recommended that the city council approve this replat. If we'll look at the screen up here, this is the property at the hard northwest corner of Eden. Here's the proposed plat, replat. And this is facing northwest from Eden and northeast from Eden, facing east and south. If you have any questions, I'm available and the applicant is also here.
Council, you have any question? No? From left to right, no. You done a good job. Thank you. Okay, this item require public hearing. I open the public hearing at the 7:59 for replat, P dot 07 dot 19. Anyone in audience would like to speak up again this item? I see none, so I call the public hearing at 7:59 and 32nd. And Council, you have any question, anything? So I'm go ahead, ready, this item ready for motion? Councilman Grohl?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the replat of Papa dash 007 dash 19 replat for 5901 Eden Drive.
Thank you, Councilman Grohl. And second, here you are.
That's it for a second.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. We got the second and please pressure your vote if you have no question. Okay, item number seven, unanimous approved by all council. Thank you, Council. And now we come number eight, Ms. Bachelor again, replat, P dot 010 dot 19. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Again, this is to conduct a public hearing and consider action on the application of Randy Broyles for approval of a replat locally known as 5516 Denton Highway. The applicant proposes to create two lots. The applicant is dividing off the northernmost portion of the lot to create a new lot for commercial purposes. The applicant intends to build a new Chicken Express restaurant. The current zoning for this tract is C2 Commercial. The northern tract where the new restaurant is being built will be 1.336 acres and the remainder of the existing lot will be 5.204 acres. The location of the 5400 Denton Highway is being closed down and the owner of the new Chicken Express will seek out a new tenant for that space. Again, on July 23rd, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval. And if we'll look at the monitor up here. This is the property that's being sliced off. It's just south of Family Dollar, there by racetrack. This is the replat. Facing east and facing west from Denton Highway, facing north and south from Denton Highway. If you have any questions, I'm available and the applicant is also here.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And Council, you have any question, comment? Okay, Councilman Wies?
Thank you, Mayor. Lana, I know Tech dot is talking about doing some stuff in the medians. Will this do anything to adversely affect what they're going to be doing as flows, as flow of traffic? Do you know?
It shouldn't because, I mean, they're going to be accessible from the northbound traffic and there's not, I don't believe the cut across is immediately in front of them.
Thank you. We have no more comment from council or question. So I open. Thank you. We have no more comment from council or question, so I open public hearing on this item at eight oh two. Anyone in audience would like to speak against the item? Go ahead, sir. Yeah, yes, sir. Please come in up and state your name, please, sir. Thank you.
James Joseph Almanza, United States Navy retired.
Yes, sir. Are you living in Harlem City, sir?
I live in five five two four Bonner, yes, and could I see that? So, please. Now, now back. Who is wanting to do what? Because five five one six is down here in the little red.
Sir, can you speak into microphone, please?
You need to come up to the mic, sir. We can hear you. We can't hear you from there.
The microphone right here, yeah. And at first, what's your name, sir?
James Joseph Almanza, United States Navy retired.
Thank you for service, sir. Go ahead.
I was just wondering who is wanting to do what?
Okay, Ms. Bachelor.
Okay, so the Chicken Express, it's here at the corner of Bonner and Denton Highway, is going to close down. They're going to build a brand new one right here on that lot.
Okay.
So when they when they build that new one, they'll relocate from there to there.
Okay. All right, I understand now. Okay, I apologize. I thought it was the Kyle Bike Shop guy. I've got it two times with him already. I already fell out in the high backyard, because he's being rude and upsetting and being mean and nasty. He's instead of selling bicycles now, he's selling them loud little Japanese dirt bikes. Everybody's here to make a buck. Doesn't matter what color where a uniform is. We're all here for peace. And I figure after six o'clock, I shouldn't hear it. I shouldn't hear him today. I've shut it off by my fence four times and start it four times, and a where's my paper, please? He threatened me at, he drove his, one of his dirt bikes a hundred and fifty yards to my house and threatened me.
May may I ask you this, Jim? You live close to this item number here, or you?
Where two little circles are in the bottom red there.
Would you show, Glenn, you know where is it?
You're on Bonner?
Yes, five five two four, and.
Right there? Okay, sir, go ahead.
Anyways, he's not a nice person. He doesn't treat people with, he's not a nice person. He doesn't treat people with respect. And he told me my fence was crooked. He sounded offensive. Okay, then he told me he would fix it. I had to have a man come out and fix it. So he's not worth his word, right? I mean, if I tell you I'm going to do something, it's as good as a handshake or a legal document here.
Yes, sir.
And then he came up on a motorcycle, revving it up every day, every day. You know how loud dirt bikes are? We don't want them in our backyard, do we? He's doing wheelies up and down the streets, trying to sell these new go-kart, new go-karts and stuff. PTSD, got in a consultation with him, walked around the back, called nine-one, pass out. Police chief coming to I told me I shouldn't be calling the fire department. I should call the police department. So the next time, that was a couple days later. My wife is sitting in the backyard smoking a cigarette. He walks across a clear hundred and fifty foot hundred, it's a hundred and fifty-two feet from his building to my fence. And then he doesn't even approach in a manner. He goes, hey, lady, your music was loud, and it wasn't even on. What, no respect.
When you mention he, who is he?
Uh.
Mr. Randy?
The man that owns Kyle's Express Bike and Mower on.
He does the same one here, no?
That's right. I had to call the police on him twice, and I got bullied by the second policeman with body cams, because he was tall and evidently not very intelligent.
Let me explain to this. This not relate to the item here.
I understand, but you afford everything, and I get my say, right?
Next time, you can speak at the visitor forum, because right now we discuss item number eight replat, and they're not in on here. We welcome you to come back, but main thing I advise you like this. Try to work with your neighbor the best you can, because if he causing problem, we have the police department here. Okay, and I hope everybody live in peace, you know?
Oh, I believe in peace, but when first that policeman came to my house and bullied my wife, that's when I was upset. He's six foot something, and he's half my age. And, you know, hey, that's threatening right there, him and another one. I voiced a complaint. Why is he yelling at my wife?
We have a chief of police sit back there. Right now, I just remind you, this item number eight, and you can talk to the police. If there is a problem, we try to help you the best we can. Okay, sir?
Who would I talk to at the police department?
Yeah, right there. And one more time, thank you for your service, and thank you if your concern bring up today. But by the way, any other other people in the audience would like to speak again this item number eight here? If you don't, I'll go ahead, call the public hearing at eight oh nine, and now we come back here for a motion. Councilman Saul?
I'm going to try this. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to place a motion to approve replat P dash zero one zero dash one nine for fifty-five sixteen Denton Highway.
Thank you, Council Susan Saul, and second, Councilman Grohl.
That's for a second. We got the second, please ratio your vote if you have no more comment or question.
Item number eight unanimously approved by council. Thank you, council. Now we go to number nine Board Commission Ordinance Amendments, Mr. Archamacho.
Mayors, if y'all recall on this, back on July eighth, you tabled it first for to try to receive citizen input. We didn't have anything that would be able to be able to reach the citizens to that degree, but you also discussed adding sections requiring a background check, nepotism with boards and commissions, and the number of terms that a member can serve. At the last meeting on the July twenty-second, you had several citizens come forward to get their input regarding the Board of Commission Ordinance, and City Attorney Olson has sent y'all back a copy of the ordinance, if you have in your packet, with the recommendations that he has in regard to what y'all asked for at the last meeting. So it's, there is some wording change that he suggests on different comments that are in the column, but it's however y'all want to do, and remember, we still have a second reading to do when we can get this finalized. So you want to open it up for discussion?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Council Thompson?
Um, yes, Mayor, and reviewing this and trying to work in the commentary by our legal staff. I think it was on, um, page two, it's in section one, starting with section D. Where we're talking about only persons who've resided in the city for twelve months and who are registered voters are to be considered for appointment. The registered voter and the residency, I think, should be verified by city staff on this. Maybe worded in that fashion. And then in E, each applicant must pass a background check. I'd just say a general criminal background check, so that we have people who have abused or pedophiles or whatever criminal activity, that those would be the ones that we're looking for. So I don't know. Other people may have other things they want to add to it, but this is kind of what I've been looking at. Let's see. As far as the nepotism, I think we should go to the second degree on the nepotism. So that a person who has relatives cannot be on the same board. If the family can serve on other boards, but not on the same board. And then going down to section two dash thirty-seven, Terms of Office. In that, I would like to remove the requirement of five to your terms. But what I would like to add in is that a board or a commission could add in the option of appointing members to as ex officio members, that they can participate in meetings but are not entitled to vote, but shall be counted to make a, and should not be counted to make a quorum. They are there to be additional support through their experience, but maybe have situations, whether it be medical, or maybe they're living with someone in another city, a daughter or something, but their primary home is here, but maybe they go stay four weeks with the daughter or something like that. But I think the board and commission would have a better feel for the people who served on that board rather than city council. I think they would have a better idea of that. And in and then going down to section two thirty-nine, where we're talking about the dress code, I would like to add in any board that conducts business in the city council chambers should be using the electronic system for voting. I would like to add that in. There was something else. I've got another note up here, if you're aware. I'm sorry. There may be only two specified, going back up to section D where we started, talking about who reside in the city. There would be two exceptions on that, and that would be animal advisory, because I believe that the veterinarian does not live here, if I'm not mistaken, and the tourist board has an appointee from the county that they send. So it would not be someone, so those would be the two exceptions as far as the requirement for residency. And I don't know, but that's the things that I went through, so I don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, and when we're talking about people same family or relative can serve the same board, that have to include the employee too. For example, like the boss, one board, and the secretary run for second, you know, in the same board, that would be no, no. Plus, I remind you about when you yield this chamber. I would like to see all board members or commissioner dress code. In summertime, if you don't have necktie, fight to me, but the main thing, please, at least have jacket. You know why? Because when the public, most of the hearing from PG, PZ, ADC, and PG, ZPA, most of the people approaching you on Orient, like lawyer, consultant, engineer, they dress so nice, and you sit up here, you look at you, you make the city looking bad. So if you feel like, and if you feel like you can do that, go ahead, let your chairman or your council know about that. That strictly have to be applied. And that's all I have. Let all the council have any comment? Mr. Heryel, go ahead, Council.
I don't have a comment about that, but I want to go back to page two, section two thirty-seven. And the very last sentence says the maximum number of terms for service on a board or commission is two, is five two-year terms, which would make the ten years. And that's kind of counter to, like in the middle of that paragraph, it says with the term of, it would be coexistent with the term of the office of the council member now, which for a council member appointment would be six years max. So I'd like to have it worded maybe at the end of the last sentence to add something that if appointed by mayor, mayor, it could be two, five two-year terms, so ten years. But if appointed by council person, it would be six years for the two years times three terms that before we term out. And also, I was thinking about somehow, should we not say something? And I can tell you the reason I don't want to add that is because when I first read that, I was like, wait a minute. That's what you say at the bottom counters with what you say in the middle. So thinking of people who are on commissions and boards, they would probably fly right past the middle part of it and go to the end and think that they would automatically be in there for ten years at the discretion of the council person that appointed them. So I think that needs to be clarified. Now I lost what else it was. I'll come back to that.
Yeah. Council Van Zandt?
Yes, I would just like to confirm that I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Thompson, that I would just like the last line on section two dash three seven stricken, the maximum number of terms of service on a board or commission is five two-year terms.
Okay, Council Weiss?
That's the same. I mean, after, this has been on here a couple times. Based on what we heard last meeting as well, I think that part needs to be removed as well.
You know, a lot of people said five two-year term, that mean ten year is too short. But actually, if based on the election, it council maybe serve for three term, six year. That if appointed by the council, then the time is shorter. The main thing here, we don't try to ask anybody, you know, let anybody out, but you can come back to a different board. Actually, the experience is important too. But somebody served like twenty-some year, I couldn't see how, you know? Like me, if you ask me to be twenty years at the mayor, thank you. Won't never happen. But by the way, I would like to listen more comment and see what we can come up with, you know? And we try to be fair for people stuck right now, and the people in the future would like to serve for City Harlem. Miss Council Heryel?
Yes, I agree about what you were saying. However, if you look at comment WK oh five, that really kind of addresses that, because the the actual formal voting member might be term limited, but it also gives you the opportunity to add the ex officio member who doesn't have a vote but can have that experience there and advocate for things that have happened in the past and what we should do. The advice is there. So by using, by adding the WK oh five comment, I think that would help us. And not only that, it would kind of go with what was suggested last time with enlarging the size of the board. It's just that you would have, still have that limited set of voting members.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, Council Weiss?
That's what I was going to mention, but I think we need to take out the where it says on the WK four, after a member has served five to your terms, kind of like Lynn, and I know there are several that the reason why they serve fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty-plus years on these boards is they don't want to do city council, but they want to be involved in their city. They have a heart for that board, whether it be fire services, beautification. They have a heart for that board, whether it be fire services, beautification, ZBA. So that's where they want to serve our city. I also understand that we have new people that want to come across and serve as well. So at that point, just like we've said in the, in the meetings and looking at this, at the beginning, I was for, you know, ten, fifteen years, whatever we needed to get new people on, but after hearing people, and listening, and talking, I think we just need to take that out. And as you're elected, you have the right to take people off or on as you deem necessary, but at the same time, you need to respect the fact, somebody's been on there twenty years, and talk to their chair, and find out what's going on. And if they start becoming absent, talk to the chair and find out, is it a medical issue? Be involved with that person. We get those quarterly reports, what's going on, and if you read those, you'll see who's missing and who's not.
Council Thompson?
Yes, Mayor, and the point that I was making is, the boards and commissions should really make that decision, because they know these people have been serving on the boards. I don't think that's something that council should be involved with. I think that if they've been on this board for fifteen, twenty years, and all of a sudden, you know, they have a medical condition, or they have to go out of town for two months to live with the daughter who's had a medical condition, then that could be moved over to, as this ex officio section. But that should be left up to the board itself, or the commission that they serve. I don't think council needs to be involved. And what will happen is, if they slide them over to that, they will notify us, because we'll realize that there's an opening on the board to be filled.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson and Councilman, so?
I agree with Mr. Wiest, that we should remove the maximum number of terms for the boards as well.
What do you mean, maximum term?
Maximum number of terms, two, five two-year terms, I agree to removing that.
And what solution? I mean, stay there for whatever, they decide to stay?
Well, again, if we appoint who we think is best for that board, we have a way to replace them, if at some point we feel that they're ineffective, based on communication with the chairman of the board, and possibly other board members. So I, I believe that we have a way to replace these people, if we feel that they need to be. And there was another comment about the number of people on each board. Can we increase that number, so that we can allow more people to participate? Maybe increase some of those boards by two people, and that would allow additional people that want to volunteer for those boards to come in and, and volunteer. And that would allow, that would, that would take care of your concern, that we have all these people that want to help, and they want to serve, but there's not a space for them, just a possibility.
Okay. Councilman Gro.
I'm not sure about this ex VO, what is it? Ex officio? I don't think we need to have anything codified in ordinance for that, because all the boards and commissions are open, so anybody could show up. And my experience showing up at the different board meetings, the chair people have been more than accommodating, asking participants there for their input. So I don't, I cannot think of any time that I've seen anybody silenced to give their opinion about some odd item that's on the agenda, so I don't think we have to codify that. I think it just adds unnecessary complexity. I'm agnostic on the term limits. I've heard both sides, where it's a mechanism to bring in fresh blood into the boards. And I could see it the other way, where it can hinder, you know, because some of these, some of these boards, commissions have long-lived traditions, or things that have occurred. And then some of them are quasi-governmental, you know, the ZBA. If the ZBA does something that the council doesn't agree with, guess what? We got to go to district court to wind it back. So there is some, there is some good in keeping people there longer, and, but I could also see bringing individuals. Now, being a, a fresh councilman, I have knocked people out of boards without talking to anybody, and that's the thing, when you have, when you're elected into this seat, they're your representative, and so you have the power to remove people. I removed a couple people this last election. So you have that right as a councilperson. So, again, I'm agnostic on the terms, but that's, it's your responsibility as a councilperson, you're able to put anybody you want to represent yours place on any board or commission.
Thank you. So, Councilman Gro, Brow, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. And please excuse me, and Ms. Thompson might have touched on this, Ms. Sol and I were discussing something over here, and about the time I hear that, that you might have touched on it, Ms. Thompson, I don't know, but on two dash thirty-six E, over to the side notes, on the background check by city staff, prior to be appointed, the city staff include police, like a police black background check? And I'm noticing here that there is a side comment over here, but how are, how far are we going to go? I mean, I don't think we can go far enough on background checks, arrest records, whatever. I mean, they represent our city, and I remember some years back, Lake Worth got in a real problem, come to find out the guy had been arrested, and I think he served on the parks board, and they'd had just done a background check, makes the city look bad, so are we going to go as far as doing a check and see if they've been arrested? How far are we going to go on this background check? I don't think we can go far enough.
Thank you, sir. You have any more comment?
No, sir. Well, I would like to know how far back.
Okay, we got, we would try to get the solution, but by the way, Council Thompson?
I refer to criminal activity, but I think our legal might be able to save what we, the limits that we can go without being unlawful, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Sure, so there's no property right to a, a board or commission position? That being said, there are some limits that you might want to consider, that courts have looked at, especially kind of in employment positions? You know, does the limitation that you're putting with the background check actually reflect what they're going to be doing? You know, I've met with a few you before on different issues, and we've talked about background checks, where, you know, are you going to restrict someone who had, you know, maybe a drug possession charge when they were eighteen, and who's now, you know, in their late fifties, from serving on a board when they haven't done anything after that? So you have to consider, is it an accurate reflection of the person and their character? And, you know, what, what are the limitations? The other consideration is, who's going to be reviewing these background checks? So there's, there's quite a few things that, you know, Wayne has expressed to look into. So you're, you're just going to need to find tailor up, what, what criminal activity are we looking at? How long ago? How closely tied does it need to be to the position that they're serving in?
Councilman Gro, Brow, I'm sorry.
You really think Walter and I brothers, or something? You know? And I like Mr. Gro, believe me.
Gro and Brow, you know, it's confusing. Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, thank you, Mayor. And I would hope, if they know that we're doing a background check, including arrest records beforehand, that they would either say, "I want to go forward with this," or, "Hmm, maybe I don't want to go forward with this," so.
I, I mean.
Just let them, let them know that we're going to do a thorough background check.
I mean, with general, I mean, if somebody work with park and recreation board, and there is children, and we don't want pedophile, you know, or people with sexual background, but we don't want to go like bankruptcy, no way. We don't want to go right back when he was sixteen, seventeen, arrested for smoking marijuana, not, that's okay. We would want to see within like five years, or ten years, we can limit it. Within ten years, a businessman being arrested for anything. If somebody make mistake.
Certain arrests, I would think, never. Pedophile, domestic abuse, things like that, that would be never.
Yeah. But we're not looking at that one as the concrete foundation to nominate them for board member, no, we don't.
Exactly. But if they know we're going to do a thorough background, they'll say, "Yeah, I'm not going to go through with this."
Can we do like, within ten years? But if the guy like twenty-five years old, we don't go that far. We go recently, or something you can suggest us to do, and here. We don't want to go back records, pick up, oh, he been arrested, no, 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 we just want recently, what happened? Like, Councilman Brow, talking about pedophile, sexual, you know, crime, no way.
So you, you could do where you have a list of no history of, are you looking at arrests or convictions for one?
No, any conviction, serious conviction.
So, so you could do where you cannot have any conviction for these offenses in your history, and then you can't have any convictions for these offenses within a certain number of years? You could, you could make classifications in your ordinance.
Okay.
Yes. My feeling like within five years would be appropriate, but sex offenders, no way.
Mayor, we'd like to, are you wanting also to see about during the ordinance, that on the application, it would state that a background check will be performed?
Yes.
Because that, that's like on our vendors, when we have people that want to sell things for the neighborhood, and they apply for a vendor's solicitation, we ask them to go to the website, and the website it states that a background check will be performed, once your driver's license has been provided, and we have had people that didn't, didn't apply, they just dropped it right there.
And the background check is confidential, you know, we don't want you looking at to say, "Well, you know, tell your friend," or something like that. No, no, we just want to look at, what did you do within five years, or something like that? Are you the sex offender, or something like that? So for safety of the citizen, he not try to embarrassment anyone. People make mistake, they can, you know, serve for a board, you know, but not like that, thing like that. By the way, Council Thompson, go ahead.
I was going to say, on the background checks, I would feel more comfortable if the police department did those, within the guidelines. I don't know if our chief would like to speak on this.
You got him to pass.
I was waiting for that one. And we are not allowed to do background checks for this type of situations. There are online sources that you can do, online, in reference to this, but we're very limited for our search capabilities for that. So employees that are going to be hired by the police department, and/or for criminal investigations, are the only things we can actually do a criminal investigation, or criminal history search on.
I mean, if we, if on application, we can put a sentence, would you like to have, would you, would you allow city to conduct your background history?
The city can, the police department can't. The city can do it on online search, they have all kinds of online search engines that you can do. Another option is, you might be able to make them furnish their own criminal history that they can get from the state. But as for the police department actually running that, it, it's not, unless you want to bail me out of jail. I'm little, I won't do good in jail.
Okay, let I ask you this, chief. Usually, they will publish the sex offender live in the city, right?
Correct, we have a list of sex offenders, we can do, the information we can provide is the information they get from, through public access. So any of the stuff that's readily available to the public, we can provide to you, but any of the, whether it was an arrest, or conviction, what the outcomes were, dates, and all that kind of stuff, that, that we would get through a criminal history search, we're not able to provide for that.
Can you supply us the list of the sex offender live in our city monthly?
We can do that. It's also on the Texas DPS website.
And when the people want to serve for the city, we could look at to see, anybody match the name, or something like that, what do you think?
I would, I'd still recommend doing the online search. The, um, Human Resources actually has access to this, I'm not trying to push it off onto them, but, you know, whoever's part can actually use, utilize their, their same platform that they use to conduct background checks for city employees to utilize on this.
Okay.
That's called tossing a monkey.
Because, okay, the main thing I'm concerned here, sex offender, and the people still on probation and parole.
Another thing to thank.
You have the list of probationer or parole?
We do not. We, we have, we have a sergeant that oversees sexual offenders that are registered in our city, but if I provide you that list, that might not be totally truthful, because somebody could move from, out of the state, not register, out of another city, not register, we not know it, and they apply for the board, they could actually still be a sexual offender that's on the Texas DPS website, but it's not on our radar yet.
I know, like you said, we have the website, you can check everyone, you have a general criminal history. My concern here, just pedophile, sex offender, and the people on parole, or, or the, you know, probation, okay? Then let me figure out about that, and we not go deeply into the people's history at all, you know? Thank you, chief. And you say Tony do better than you on this one, or what?
In that scenario, absolutely.
Oh, my God. Okay. Thank you. You have any more comment? If not, let I ask, Council, you want to table this, or you want to go ahead, do the first reading? You want table? Okay. Now I need the motion for table. Ms. Hillier, go ahead, ma'am.
I move that we table, let me get back to the number of it.
Thank you.
That we table ordinance number zero, two zero one nine dash zero one eight dash zero one, for further thought.
We got the motion now, second, Councilman Susan Saul.
Thank you, Mayor, that would be for a second.
Okay, we have a second now, go ahead, your, your vote. Okay, this item unanimous approve, and all council, we move that item table it. Thank you. Now we, city staff report, no, we have none. How about future agenda? Anyone want to put anything on the future agenda? Council?
Okay.
Council Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have been requested by the Ethics Commission Subcommittee to give council an update on their assignment, and first of all, I want to say, there's four people serving that was on the committee during the charter review. And then we've added two additional citizens whom have called up, and I want to say, they're doing a tremendous job. They've worked very hard, and they're trying to get through all this. But one thing that occurred through legal counsel, was when the citizens voted on the ordinances, when this was established, it also included the boards and commissions, so the scope of this ethics commission is going to be a little bit bigger than what was originally thought. So I'm just asking, they're continuing to work, and legal has been involved with this, and they're giving us guidance, and there's communication going back and forth, but they're still going to need some more time to work through some of this. They pretty much know what the commission looks like, but we've got to set up the processes. So they've, they finalized and pretty much have everything identified, but it's now just giving out the responsibility and what the commission will be doing. Okay?
Thank you. Council Thompson, anymore? I see none, so I go to item number twelve, resignation of boards, commission, and committee members. Anyone have? I, okay, go ahead, Councilman Wies.
Mayor, I need to, due to letters of resignation, I need to, for planning and zoning, place four, Steve Chapman has resigned, and then for place four, on the library board, Teresa Cabano has resigned. Steve also served on the place two CCPD and red light camera advisory committee.
Okay, so again, we have Steve Chapman, right? Okay, Council, go ahead, vote for resignation from Councilmember Wies. Okay, we got unanimous approve or resignation, and anymore? Okay, you have none, and now appointment, reappointment of board and commission, you have anyone? Well, I- Well, I see none. So now, at the time, we, we have no excuse of some of council member, and now we will stop this one and go to executive session based on the government code five five one, chapter five five one, oh seven two, oh seven one, and oh seven four, at the eight fourteen.